The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the City Council of Dennison, Texas is now in session. This evening, our invocation will be given by Pastor Cheryl Murphy of the United Methodist Church, Waples Methodist Church, I'm so sorry.
So, I was gathered with all of you on Friday morning and what an honor it was to be there, to hear so many people gathered to celebrate this amazing community. And Mayor, we are proud to have you as our leader here. I am the 52nd Senior Pastor to serve Waples over the last 145 years. We are itinerant and we are here for a season. And I speak on behalf of all of them to say what an honor it is to have served this community and to have such awesome leadership here now, leading us not only into the present, but into the future, and what a wonderful future we have before us. Let us pray. Almighty God, we know your Spirit has been in this place, in this community, in the neighborhoods, in the schools, in the churches, the restaurants, and the stores. And we continue to ask your Spirit to be upon us, to be upon this meeting as we hear the plans for not only the present, but the future. May we be surrounded by your Spirit that grants us wisdom, that grants us knowledge, that gives us the insight and the light and the compassion to see all people that are part of this community and honor all of our neighbors. We pray this night in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ and all God's people said, amen.
Thank you. Well, tonight, we are very honored to have a special guest from St. Luke's School that's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you come on up here?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you so much, you did such a great job. Tonight, we have the privilege to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of Donna Hunt. Donna has been the caretaker and the storyteller of our rich history of our community. We have all been privileged and intrigued by the 2050 articles she has written since 1967, which contain often unknown facts and maybe some forgotten stories. As a lifelong resident of Dennison, it is easy to recognize Donna's passion as she writes about the city she loves. Donna, if you'll meet me at the podium, I'm going to invite Councilman Hander to join me and we're going to present you with this proclamation. Why don't you stand here in the middle of us, how about that? Alright. Proclamation. Whereas Donna Hunt was born June 7th, 1935, in Dennison, Texas, she is a native Dennisian and graduated from Dennison High School in 1953. And whereas Ms. Hunt's first Dennison history article appeared in 1967, and on August 9th, 1984, Ms. Hunt was hired as the first ever female editor of the Dennison Herald, where she served until 1994. From March 1994 through 2000, Ms. Hunt served as manager of the Eisenhower Birthplace Day Historic Side. And whereas the city of Dennison and Grayson County has realized and enriched knowledge of our local history due to the tireless work of local writer and historian Donna Hunt. For many years, she has written twice weekly newspaper columns documenting the history of this region. And whereas Ms. Hunt provides a positive image for the Dennison community by having promoted the history of our great community and written more than 2,050 articles alone. Ms. Hunt also has numerous published works and is active in many community events and organizations. And whereas Ms. Hunt has won numerous awards from Press Women of Texas, National Federation of Press Women, the Associated Press, and other newspaper and community organizations. Ms. Hunt is and will continue to have a positive impact on our region through her demonstration and instruction, encouragement, and efforts to preserve our history, both big and small. And whereas Ms. Hunt is an exceptional example of a volunteer and an advocate that has given freely of her time and energy for our community. Now therefore, I, Janet Gott, as Mayor, and on behalf of the City of Dennison, Texas, do hereby proclaim January 21st, 2020, as Donna Hunt Day in the city of Dennison and encourage all citizens to recognize Donna Hunt's contribution that makes our lives more colorful, creative, and fulfilling. Signed, January 21st, 2020, Janet Gott, Mayor.
Wouldn't be right to honor her without a little care to be. And John, don't correct me or I'll come wrong. I've read this a couple of months ago. When President Eisenhower was in office, he had a hickory on his desk. And then Latin, English, there was a Latin inscription on there and English it translates to, "Jillian men are strongly in deed." And I don't think there's anyone that's done more deeds for this town and our history than you. I've known Donna since I was in high school. And when she helped me start my own history column for the school newspaper, The Stare, and I would email her and then she would correct what I'd done wrong, you know, back and forth, because she's the ultimate knowledge and storykeeper of our city. And without her, we wouldn't be where we are today. Let me make sure you correct your Donna down while we're talking. Just before the meeting about how the other communities, even in our county, don't appreciate their history as much as we do because we have you. Without you, we would be lost. So, thank you for helping us move Dennison forward while honoring our past. No one other than you.
Not a good speech by him, going to say, "Thank you." I don't know that all this is deserved. It's something I was paying to do, part of it, some of it I did. A volunteer, as you say. But it's been a pleasure whatever I've done for the city of Dennison, because we've never wanted to sound like we didn't. And you have some great people on the city council here. My friend that's here, this is. And you're going to hear more about him later. So, at this point in our agenda, time is set aside so that citizens may make public comments on anything that is an action item listed on the agenda. In order to speak, a request to speak card must be completed and returned to the city clerk prior to reaching this public comment section. Comments are limited to three minutes and must address action items listed on the agenda. These comments, these are comments only and don't expect a dialogue between the citizen and the council or the staff. The city registration and inspection program is an information item only and will not have public comments this evening. However, we will hold a town meeting, a town hall meeting, on February the 13th so that any questions you still have remaining after tonight can be addressed. Additionally, when you came in, you were given a question card. So if during the presentation, there is something that arises that you still have a question about, if you will include your contact information, then the staff will get back with you to answer that question for you. And we want to be sure that we attempt to get all the questions answered prior to the town hall meeting in February. So, the first item on our agenda, oh. Chris, do we have anyone who wishes to speak?
No, we do not.
Okay. First item, item three, public comments. Uh, no, excuse me. Let's move past that and go to item four, consent agenda.
Mayor, I approve the consent agenda as presented.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5A, receive an update on city's rental registration and inspection program. And before we get into this, I want to make just a few comments about how we arrived here tonight. This process began back on June 20th with a well-attended public forum. And during that forum, we learned that we had a lot more to learn. It has been a lengthy process, actually six months, but we are excited to be at this point. First, I would like to recognize all those that have served on the rental registration inspection team. And if, when I call your name, if you'll stand and be recognized, we would appreciate that. So, you don't have to stand, Obie. Obie Greenlee, city council member. Erin Smith, large apartment representative. Mark Kuhneman, DDA and rental unit owner. Janet Carroll, real estate affordable housing advocate. Mark Ewig, rental property owner. Jonathan Earnhardt, builder and rental property owner. Joanne Milhorn, citizen representative. Ashton Smith, rental property owner and manager. Tracy Holman, property manager and Realtor. Judge David Hawley, and the mayor. Staff support is Juddson Rex, our city manager. Tony Kye, Dennison Development Alliance. Kimberly Murray, Director of Community and Development Services. And Robert Lay, co-compliance manager. So, at this time, we are going to ask Ashton Smith, one of our committee members, to come up and give us a presentation about the process and how we got to where we are today.
This ain't gonna work. Do I need to turn it around or just stand back here? It'd be a little awkward to just talk to y'all. We'll stand over here, isn't that okay? I'm pretty loud. Howdy. So, you might remember me from the public forum that we had several months ago about the rental and registration inspection program. I asked everyone in favor to raise their hand, and of course, no one raised a single hand. So, but we've gone through a big evolution. So, shortly after that meeting, where, you know, nobody was really happy with it, or at least none of the landlords were, shortly after that meeting, I sent an email to Mayor Gott and Judd Rex. And I said, you know, if you really want to prove that you care about all sides of rental property, come to my office, sit down, read through all my text messages from tenants where they call me a slumlord only when they're late. Look through all the way that, you know, tenants left houses, you know, see the proof, you know. We didn't cherry pick, but to my surprise, Janet, Mayor Gott, she called me herself and she came herself and sat in my office for two hours and 45 minutes. And it meant a lot, you know, she read through everything. She saw the pictures of move-out conditions and move-in conditions. And she listened to me for a long time. And then she asked me to be on a task force, a committee of people that would help, you know, narrow down a program that will actually work for everybody. And so, I was invited onto that and I went on there. And, you know, we expressed just how much landlords were going to have to, how many expenses they would incur with all the little things that would have to be fixed that aren't health or safety related at all, but they don't comply with the stack of codes like this. So, you know, and that, you know, they said that's not what they really wanted anyway. It wasn't about that, but none of us believed it. And I was among the first that didn't believe it. And, but here we are today and we have a program that actually, it only benefits landlords. So, I know that other people are going to go into details about it, but we got exactly what we wanted, and more, in my opinion. You know, just registering our property gets us what would have equated to about $10,000 net new profit to me last year, just with what you've probably already read about with 50% off of special trash pickups. That's a huge deal. I paid about $20,000 last year just getting rid of trash, you know, because everybody has too many twin beds, apparently. And so, we settled that out and that was really good. You know, and then there's other things like connecting the water that we deal with all the time. But it's completely evolved, there's no mandatory anything, okay? So, you know, that's a good thing. And I'll let them go into all the details, but basically, I'm just here to say that us all talking and coming together and emailing and getting with the city and sitting down and having meetings actually did pan out to something that truly none of us really thought it would, the landlords at least. So, I'm grateful to Mayor Gott and Judd Rex and Robert Lay for, you know, educating me and our team of people that, you know, the landlords and property managers that were there, you know, we had definitely educated them, you know. And so, now I think we're on a much better track. It honestly doesn't accomplish what the city initially wanted it to accomplish, but it certainly helps us a lot. So, I want to hear, you know, I'm going to be sitting and listening to all the details just like you will be here in a minute. But from what I understand so far, and that's most of it, it is really good for us. So, I don't think I have anything else to say, but everybody that's been asking me constantly, what's up with the plan, you know, what's changed in the evolution. I didn't say much out of respect for the city because they really, truly have worked with me and other landlords. So, and again, I own almost 60 properties, most of them are in Dennison, you know, and it would have affected me a lot in a negative way. If we went the direction that we were originally, it looked like it was going. But when they said they care, they had to prove it, they proved it, they care.
So now, our city manager is going to share some details.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and Ashton, appreciate your comments. It's really been a great six months working with you and the other team that we put together to better understand rental property in Dennison. It's definitely been eye-opening. So, before I turn it over to Kimberly and Robert to kind of get into the details of the program, just want to provide kind of a 30,000-foot view of what we came up with and kind of go from there. But really even stepping back, what I think the committee did most of all is help us look at this in a broader effort in terms of, let's not just think about Dennison and housing in terms of rental property and how we can regulate that, but what else can we do to approach code compliance and neighborhood cleanup and that whole effort and what other things can we do? And so, what you're going to hear tonight is much more than just rental inspections and rental registration and that sort of thing. It's a much broader look at what we, what progress we can make as a community. And so, of course, we began with the end in mind, which is, you know, what I have up here is our goal is to take steps toward ensuring quality housing for all Dennison residents in support of our city's vision. And Mayor Gott talks a lot about our vision to have quality housing for all income levels and what does that look like? So, this really was our objective in approaching everything that we came up with. And I think it's important to distinguish that we say we take steps because no single effort's going to really get us there. It's going to take an incremental approach to get us to where we need to be. And I think we take some pretty big steps forward with this approach. So, a few takeaways that are worth mentioning that really came out of our committee's work. One is that we, of course, recognize that there are substandard housing units in Dennison and that there's a desire both on the part of the city and tenants, community leaders, landlords to address that issue. And if we don't do anything, nothing's going to happen, right? That's the case with anything. And what we really learned is that it's an owner and a tenant issue. It's definitely not a one-sided issue and we need to better understand both sides in order to help move us forward. It's also very complex. I mean, we're not just talking about housing. There are social issues involved, there's homelessness, there's, you know, we went off on all kinds of tentacles at some of our discussions and it got very interesting at times, but it's a complex issue. You really can't just wrap a single net around it and ring it in to tackle it. The other thing is that the city, the city can do a couple of things. One is that we can create an environment where we really encourage responsible property owners and tenants to be in Dennison and welcome them here. And we can do that in a lot of different ways and hopefully, some of the steps we take will do that. The other thing we can do is foster positive relationships with our property owners, which I think was the biggest thing we accomplished over the past six months working with property owners and other community stakeholders in this effort. And really kudos to the stakeholders that stepped up to talk about education because part of what we're going to roll out this year is an education program, which, by the way, the team wants to put together, the volunteers, to come up with the curriculum so that we can help tenants and property owners better understand their role in creating quality housing in Dennison. So, from that, those takeaways kind of led us into different objectives. And, you know, we want to encourage the registration of rental units for one so that we know what we're working with as a community. We know we have a lot of rental units out there, but how many are there? How can we understand the problem if we don't really know the extent of it? So, we want to encourage that and at the same time, we want to provide support and assistance and encouragement to our property owners and implement the educational programs that we talked about. The other thing is our minimum property standards compliance. This has been a big point of emphasis, as the council knows, for many years now. And we've had lots of progress in some of our key corridors and our more significant areas of town that are more visible. How do we kind of take that to the next level and really build upon what codes are in place now and expand our efforts there? And that really leads to, okay, what can we do from a staffing standpoint? What can we do from a priority standpoint to take our code compliance efforts to the next level without creating something that's overly burdensome for the owners and tenants? And so, really, the framework comes down to three things. And if you take away anything tonight, this is what we want you to take away. That is that we'll roll out a voluntary registration program. That's kind of the first level of what we're talking about. The second is that we want to put together a voluntary inspection program. So, if you want to be a VIP owner in Dennison and be able to put yourself out as a VIP owner, we want to create an opportunity for you to be, to be that and to do that. And so, there's a voluntary inspection program that we'll talk about here in just a minute. And the number three really, I think, is the big thing. And that is that we're retooling and enhancing our code compliance efforts. And that's not just for rental property, that applies to really citywide. You know, I threw out on Friday at the Economic Development Summit, the idea, or the number of about 30,000 code compliance cases that we've worked in the last five years. And that's good, that's a ton of work and effort on the part of our staff and the community and they've done a great job. But how can we make those next 30,000 cases that we work have more impact visually and from a safety and life safety? How can that have more of an impact on our community? And so, we're really enhancing those efforts. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Robert Lay, our code compliance supervisor, to talk about the first two up here, the voluntary registration and our inspection program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I get the opportunity to roll out a little more of the details of where we landed with rental property with registrations and inspections. So, as Judd mentioned, we have a couple of different registration types that we wanted to go over. And the first one is simple. You show up, you tell us you own all these properties by address and you're registered with the city. One of the things that we heard early on was a little bit of angst from property owners that there was a fee associated with that rental or that registration. Well, this was never about, you know, the city making money. This has always been about improving housing, so we dropped that fee immediately. Take that away. So, if you want to come in and register your properties, it's not going to cost you anything. In working with the task force, we identified some things that the city could do to help benefit landlords. When I go through these, the idea behind these benefits where if we can help the property owners on the front end, wouldn't it be nice if Ashton could reinvest that $10,000 into his properties on the interior, exterior? So, we hope through some of these benefits that we see that reinvestment go back in. Some of those benefits that were mentioned, 50% discount on special collections. We heard the task force people say that people like to leave their stuff when they leave their rental units and how much money they spend a year through labor and cleanup and haul-off. All the way down to when a rental or a property owner needs to turn their water service back on to clean, we can waive that small fee. That small fee will add up over time. Also, if they have bigger projects, we can help them on building permit fees. And talking to our multifamily or apartment type owners, you know, if they had two days of dumpster service, we could add an additional day of dumpster service and not an additional charge to help them on that end. And also helping through making records requests, helping property owners identify good tenants. You know, if they want to request information about a certain property where a tenant has come from, if they need to know about code issues potentially, we can provide them that information. Granted, they go through the proper process, but maybe that helps them find good tenants that'll stay with them for a long time. The second type of registration, and Judd referred to it as VIP or voluntary inspected inspection program, that kind of just worked out, VIP, is the same thing. They can come in and they can register their properties. They can receive the benefits that come with registering their properties. What's different about that is someone that's going to be in the VIP program will voluntarily allow the city to inspect their properties on the interior and exterior. At-tenant changes again when they're vacant. And what the city will do in turn is allow them to market themselves as a VIP owner. You know, that will help them potentially attract better tenants. The city will use our social media and other ways to promote them as a VIP landlord. Again, for a single-family unit, that is them allowing us to inspect the inside and out. You know, for a apartment type or multifamily, what we come up with is allowing the city to inspect 10% of apartment companies. So, if they have 50 units, you know, we would inspect up to five of those for them to be in the VIP program. in the VIP program. Um, you know, we think where we landed here, um, is a great start, uh, for improving, uh, properties in Dennison, um, and can make a big impact on our neighborhoods in Dennison, and, you know, I as staff, and, you know, I'm excited about that and, and where it goes. So, with that, I'm happy to answer questions from you guys.
Questions from council? Thank you, Rob. Now, Kimberly Murray will tell us more.
I'll wrap it up. All right, good evening, Mayor and Council, it's great to be here tonight. Uh, what I'd like to share with you tonight is it's important to share with you our efforts for the last few years on code compliance and, uh, the code compliance division. Currently, we have three officers and a division manager, and it's divided up to cover the entire city. Each of our code compliance officers, uh, works in a certain area of the city, and they rotate throughout the year and work on minimum property standards, nuisance violations, grass and trash, and those types of things. Um, this program has been going on for a few years now, it's been very successful, um, and I want to share with you a little bit how we're, uh, planning on enhancing that in the future. Um, our officers are continuing to focus on high-visibility areas, these are our main, uh, transportation corridors, like Morton Street, Armstrong Avenue, Austin Avenue, it's the areas where not only that we, uh, often drive past, but also our traveling public and our, and our tourists come and visit our beautiful city. Uh, they also focus on, um, around our schools, all of our elementary schools, BMAC, and also our middle school areas, and it's really important that, um, those areas maintain, uh, an important visual presence, we have a lot of children walking and such. And also our parks, so, um, that's also a main area that they work as well. And not just our larger regional parks like Waterloo, but also our small neighborhood and pocket parks within all areas of our city. Um, the third item is our strategic neighborhood focus, and I want to expand a little bit on what this means. Um, we have a variety of areas in our downtown, on the east side particularly, and some of our central area of the city, where there are a lot of infill areas, where those lots have been demoed or that they're available to be developed on. And we've had a lot of new construction built there, new affordable homes and, uh, other market rate homes as well. And those neighborhoods are important areas for our officers to look at and work with the property owners there to come into compliance with minimum property standards. Uh, because of those, um, new, uh, properties that are coming in, it's important that there's a visual presence there and everyone, um, starts to work on their areas. Officers are there, and they, um, they, uh, leave hang tags that have information about, uh, what, what the violation is and give an opportunity for cleanup. One of the things that we've discussed with our code compliance officers, in addition to those hang tags, is to include perhaps additional educational information about why they're getting the tag and, and what they can do in the future to eliminate getting a tag, as well as maybe, um, including a, a discount on a special pickup or that sort of thing, to help the tenant or the homeowner be able to, uh, remove their material. Um, another strategic, uh, topic that we've, we've talked about and we want to, um, vet a little bit more at an upcoming meeting, is also potentially having, uh, a neighborhood block cleanup party, where our code officers come in, uh, with, with, uh, working with, uh, our landlords in those areas and property owners and, and offer kind of a free neighborhood cleanup. Our officers will come and help, we bring in free dumpsters and, and he- help a neighborhood get rid of some stuff that sometimes it's just hard to get rid of it. So, that's another idea to being proactive. Um, we're also gonna continue to identify the substandard structures and continue our demolition program, it's been extremely successful over the last several years with almost five hundred, uh, substandard properties being demolished. And with that, we've had, as I've discussed, the infill, uh, new builds that have been there. So, we're gonna see over time, um, you know, a slowing down of, of those as we've continued to make great strides in that area, but we will continue to work on that. Um, and other strategies to promote code compliance initiatives, uh, as was mentioned earlier, we've got some, uh, to revise some of our ordinances to, uh, to be in, in compliance with the program that we're promoting today, but also to take a look at our nuisance codes and kind of consolidate all that, make sure that it's still working in the way that's gonna be most beneficial for our community. Uh, that also includes feedback from our stakeholder group, which we had got some input on them on how to address some of the, some of the folks that are, uh, sometimes struggle with compliance for a variety of reasons, and they were in favor of escalating the penalties, the financial penalties for compliance. So, we're gonna look into, uh, making some revisions there as well. Um, and in addition, uh, you'll learn more at our town hall meeting, we have several, uh, renovation and incentive programs that, uh, help the homeowner and the property owner come into compliance, including our CDBG emergency, uh, rehabilitation program, uh, as well as some of our, uh, residential incentive programs. And so, we will, um, be sharing more about that at our town hall meeting. So, um, and we will also continue to, um, uh, hear complaints, uh, we still receive complaint-based, uh, inspections, and, uh, we're still gonna be able to, to do that as well, like we've always done. Still going backwards. Okay. So, I'm gonna talk about next steps, and then I can ask if there's any, any questions from the, from the council. So, tonight, we're meeting here, we're sharing an update with you and with the community about our program. Um, and then we are having a town hall meeting on February thirteenth, it's gonna be at six o'clock at the Trel Elementary School, but this is gonna be the focus, as well as, um, having tables and staff from all of our divisions and departments within the city, the focus is going to be on, uh, what our co-compliance division, what they do, what all of our programs that we offer to support, uh, a quality, uh, housing for Dennison, and some of the, some of the things, uh, we're gonna hear about in more detail. And then on February eighteenth, uh, we're going to bring back to the city council consideration of all the ordinance changes that we need to make to tidy up, uh, our priorities and our proposed staffing plan. So, currently, as I said, we have three co-compliance officers and a, and a manager, and we're gonna be coming back with proposing to add one additional, uh, co-compliance officer to divide the city up further and be able to tackle more of this work that we've discussed tonight. Right now, our plan effective date of changes is for May first, two thousand twenty, and that's when, um, we'll be able to, um, start to register folks voluntarily. So, are there any questions?
Questions for Ms. Murray? Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we leave this item, I want to give the opportunity to, um, our stakeholder team that's present, if there's anything that they would like to add, um, before we're done. This is Mark Ewig.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I'm gonna pull on Ashton and move this thing around, direct it to the folks that are, are like me, out here tonight.
Okay.
We're all stakeholders, though, those behind me and those in front here in Dennison. I want to take the time to thank the mayor and, uh, Judd and, and the others that gave me the opportunity to serve on this committee. Uh, many of you that were here, uh, back in June, uh, came in with our blood pressure high and many questions and a lot of concerns. We left here not knowing what was gonna happen. The good news I took from that meeting was, and I've told Mayor Janet this before, was they didn't shut the door at eight o'clock, they didn't cut us off when we were in the middle of sentences, they give her an opportunity to talk. So, I knew we had a government that was gonna be open. Unlike the government today, up outside of this city, where we don't really get to speak, I could tell we were gonna have the ability to speak. They put a committee together, as Ashton said, uh, I think I had mentioned putting a committee together that night when I spoke, and then they gave Ashton the opportunity, as he said, with the mayor going over, and really looking at the problems that all of us, uh, encounter as, as landlords. I think this is a win for us as landlords, it gives us an opportunity now to, uh, address the issues we have in an open forum, and to, uh, save some money on the front end, so that we can make improvements where we need to, because of some of the land, uh, some of the tenants we have and the way they leave their properties, our properties, if you will. As you've noticed, uh, at this point, there's no cost to us, which was something that was, uh, near and dear to, I think, every one of our hearts, uh, that expense on the front end. Uh, the good news, uh, as I wrap up my conversation, is that it's an open door. Our committee, uh, both the mayor and Judd have said want us to continue to meet, so if we run into some roadblocks, if we think there's some blind alleys, they're going down, we're gonna be able to talk about it, address it, and, uh, keep, keep that door swinging both ways. So, we're all, uh, moving the way we want to move, uh, and seeing the city of Dennison be a better, better place for everyone to come by. And I, uh, one of my main concerns, I've always been a advocate of working people, is that we do, uh, provide affordable housing. We have a lot of folks in this city, in this county, that are non-professional people, and it's hard for them to, to make it on a day-to-day basis. And, uh, they were very, uh, open to listening to the fact that those folks struggle, and I don't want to see us get to a point where we push them out on the street and they become the homeless, working forty hours a week with no place to shelter. So, thank you, uh, to all of you that gave me the opportunity, and folks, uh, have a good evening.[1578.44][1578.44][applause]
Tracy, would you like to say anything?
How did I feel like you? I'm Tracy Homuth, I'm a real estate broker here in Dennison, and, uh, and I was delighted to get on the stakeholders, uh, committee because I have a legal obligation to a number of people that trust me with their properties here in Dennison. And I, I told the mayor and I, I told Judd, when I got here, I thought, here we go, it's just another profit center. And the thing about the, the meetings that I attended, the thing about the way that we work together, I really believe that we're in an environment here where we want to make a difference. Things that were revealed to us during these meetings were things like over half of the, the properties that aren't meeting code aren't owner-occupied. And that tells me that there are people out there that need our help, or need a swift kick, one or the other. But if they need our help, you know, we should have something for them. So, I, that's one of the reasons that Mark and I talked earlier, we want to move this thing forward and to continue to, to make Dennison a better place to, to live. And, and I really believe in the, in the, uh, that it wasn't a profit center, that it began. And I was lucky enough to be part of it, and, uh, I want to make sure that we continue and educate people, give them an opportunity to do the right thing. And, and I can tell you, every property I manage in Dennison will be a VIP property, or it won't be a property that I'll manage. And, uh, I think a lot of us feel that way, that we, we created a program, we're not being forced into, but we're, we're gonna do the right thing. And I appreciate, I appreciate their time to this, thank you.[1718.64][1718.64][applause]
Thank you, Ashton and Mark and Tracy, for sharing, um, the process that we've been through. Um, this was a learning experience for all of us. Uh, the, the city learned about difficulties that property owners had that we didn't realize, and the stakeholder team learned about barriers that the city has that they didn't realize. So, it's been a real learning process, and we appreciate, more than you know, you giving your time to help develop this, so that it's something that works for all of us. And then the end, uh, provides safe housing for all of the citizens of Dennison. So, um, be sure that you come out for the town hall meeting on February the thirteenth, uh, you know, we want to hear from you. Their, their staff will be there for you to have the opportunity to ask any questions that you have. So, um, item six, executive session, there is no need for an executive session this evening, so with there being no further visits to come before this body, the time is six forty-four, and we are adjourned.